How's it going?
Good morning, or good morning, good evening. And welcome to the June 23rd, 2014 Burnsville Planning Commission meeting. Welcome Commissioners, welcome staff, welcome everybody in our listening or viewing audience. The first item on the agenda is the adoption of the agenda. Any changes from Commissioners?
None from me Chair.
Staff?
No changes, Mr. Chair. I'd like you to know I did hear from Commissioners Tahiri and Thomas and they're, were not planning to attend tonight.
Alright, so there's, I think there'll be three of us at this time, but with that, I would look for a motion for the adoption of the agenda.
So moved?
Moved by Commissioner Bradrick.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Singh. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that passes 3-0. Next item on the agenda is the approval of minutes from June 9th, 2014. Any changes from Commissioners?
None from me Chair.
Mr. Chair, is it June 9th or May 27th?
Um, June 9th, I believe.
Aye. What was sent to me says, May 27th. But I'd like to move that the adoption of the minutes for a June 9th meeting.
Alright.
Second?
We'll correct that if there's a conflict.
Okay, with that potential correction, any change, other changes from staff?
Nope.
Moved by Commissioner Singh, second by Commissioner Bradrick. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that passes 3-0. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing for the Dworsky Family Trust for a preliminary and final plot of a two lot subdivision to be known as DFT Industrial Park rezoning from B4 to B4 PUD, a concept and development stage PUD for an office warehouse building and modifications to the Park Jeep dealership located at 1408 Highway 13 West. Mr. Slania.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Commissioners, the applicant has requested the public hearing be continued on this application. Unfortunately, notices dig go out to the newspapers and adjacent property owners, so the public hearing needs to be opened. If there are any comments at this time, we will put them into the record. The applicant has extended, provided staff with the required extension. We expect at this time, the application will be back to you sometime in September. Certainly that is subject to change. We do not have a specific date and therefore, we will re-notify the, through the proper channels when we have that date established. Again, Mr. Chair, it is a public hearing.
Great, thank you, Mr. Slania. With that, I will open the public hearing. If anyone has any questions or comments to this item, please step forward at this time. Seeing none, I will move that the public hearing stay open until a future date, or ask that there be a motion to-
Mr. Chair, I move that the, this matter be continued until some future date.
Alright, so moved by Commissioner Singh, second by Commissioner Bradrick. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All opposed, that passes 3-0 and will be heard at another, continued at another date in time.
Thank you.
Alright, the next item on the agenda is a public hearing, Enterprise Leasing Company for a preliminary and final plot to be known as Enterprise First Edition and a conditional use permit for outdoor sales located at 12445 River Ridge Boulevard. Mr. Slania.
Thank you, Mr. Chair Commissioners. Again, this is a public hearing. The request is on behalf of Enterprise Leasing Company. There are two parcels involved in this subject site. You'll see here, an aerial photo, Nicolet Avenue runs here, Highway 13 runs right here. This would sit right off of River Ridge Lane and River Ridge Boulevard. The two parcels are zoned B3, which are general business. The adjacent parcels in this neighborhood are zoned B3 and B3 PUD. They are also designated as business office retail and the comprehensive plan. One of the two parcels is vacant at this time. The Easterly parcel is currently owned by Holiday Station Stores. It exists as an outlot from the gas station redevelopment. The property to the west is owned by a chiropractic business. They are both under purchase agreement with Enterprise at this time. The total site is 1.45 acres. The building area is just under 4,000 square feet as proposed. The green area required is 25%. The applicant has satisfied that. There's also parking lot green space, building perimeter green space requirements the applicant has also satisfied. Let me jump to another aerial, excuse me, visual aid. Highway 13 is off the page in this bottom left corner. That is the cul-de-sac that you see right here. The veterinary clinic in this corner will remain. And you can see the outline of that building right here. The proposed building for Enterprise is located in this area. Parking and inventory throughout the site. There is also a connection to the Holiday Station Store site in this northeast corner. That would be located right here. There is a easement in place from the original development of the Holiday Station. Holiday and Enterprise would like to retain that, so they do have an easement. So vehicles can access the Holiday site and then exit out onto River Ridge Lane. The facility would be for used vehicle sales by Enterprise. This would not be a rental facility for them. They have a separate operation under the Enterprise umbrella that they eventually sell to the public, vehicles that they've used in their rental fleet. Typically, this is around the 40,000 mile mark. Different types of vehicles have different thresholds. But this would not be a rental facility. It would be a used car facility, open to the public. The facility would not be open on Sundays. Their hours are, their proposed hours are 9 to 7, Monday through Thursday, 9 to 6 on Friday, 9 to 5 on Saturday. Let's see. Enterprise does not do vehicle maintenance at this facility. They do have a small overhead door that we'll get into and a wash bay for vehicle prep once a vehicle is sold before pickup by the, by the customer. But it is not mechanical maintenance. It's not even an automated car wash. It is hand wash and prep by Enterprise staff. Outdoor sales and rental lots are a conditional use in the B3 district. There are performance criteria outlined in the zoning ordinance that get to that, the required landscaping, increased green space within the site, screening criteria. They are not allowed to have outdoor speakers or intercom systems. There are also provisions for a car wash. In this situation, they satisfy that, but some of the larger dealerships have car washes that are open to the public besides, or excuse me, old, previous customers besides new customers. With the site, the applicant and staff went through a number of versions on this discussing the location of this building in relationship to Highway 13. Staff would have preferred to see the building up closer to Highway 13, whether it be centered or just south along the property, in an effort to present the building as the main focus and the inventory behind the building. That's difficult specifically with this site. There are over 60 feet of easements that run through the property in this area, different utility easements. Parking is allowed within those, but the building cannot be, which presented some difficulties for the applicant. Also to provide circulation, flow, the ability to, the ability for emergency vehicles to get through the site, there were some restrictions. Certainly, the applicant put their best foot forward. If those easements weren't in place, we would be looking at a, I think, a different design. But in either case, the applicant has satisfied the zoning ordinance for setbacks and layout requirements. I'll get to the architecture of the building. Here is a color overlay of the building. Again, River Ridge Boulevard here, River Ridge Lane. This is the westbound lanes of Highway 13 at the bottom. This would be an image looking northwest from Highway 13 into the site. Looking northeast, or excuse me, looking, looking south from behind the building. Looking east, just to give you an idea what the building looks like. The architectural design of the building is consistent with the ordinance requirements. There's a cultured stone base on the base of the building. The balance of it is stucco. You saw in the elevations, there's a green stucco band that wraps around three sides of the building. That's of course, an enterprise color they're trying to incorporate into the design. It is a single-story building. I believe it caps out at 21 and a half feet. It is intended again for office and sales. The limited footprint is an indication there are no vehicle maintenance or mechanic techs onsite for the property. As far as the site goes, there is significant grade change on the site. Again, I think that has been a design, not as a design issue, but a design complication for the applicant getting this site to work properly. The high end of the site is over here. Everything slopes down as you get closer to Holiday. You can see right here, Holiday Station Store does have a significant retaining wall on the Highway 13 side, and that's been something they're working with. There will be significant grading onsite. There will be tree removal. Of the trees removed, they're box elder and crab apple, not of high quality. But the applicant does provide the necessary landscaping. As I said, they satisfy the 25% green space. They're required as a car dealership to have 8% within their parking lot and drive aisles. They're proposing 9%. One item I'd like to discuss is the south end of the property, right here. You can see the south property line jogs. That is again, a result of the mindot right-of-way and the shape of those two parcels as they exist. The applicant is proposing a black ornamental fence in this area, three feet tall. Staff supportive of this as a year-round buffer and physical and aesthetic breakup from Highway 13 and people viewing the parking lot from the outside of the site. The applicant had looked at shrubs in this area and different opportunities. Staff was supportive of the fencing. There are no, currently, no trees along this section. That was indicated in your staff report and is a condition. Staff has recommended that additional overstory trees be planted in that section. The balance of, again, here's the section we're looking at, talking about. The balance of the site is well-designed, overstory trees, ornamental trees, low-lying shrubs. They have done a nice job of upgrading the site from the existing and satisfying the ordinance requirements. Screening is satisfied by the ordinance. Again, there is a overhead door in this area, looking, or excuse me, on the north elevation. Trash and recycling will be stored in this area and rolled out for pickup. The applicant has confirmed the rooftop units and HVAC equipment will be screened behind the parapet walls as required by the ordinance. The applicant is proposing one pylon sign for the site. That is shown right here. Again, it is not along Highway 13 or directly along Highway 13 due to the easements that exist. It has been shifted a little bit to the north. That is 28 feet tall and 125 square feet. That is well within the ordinance requirements. The total signage allowed is 425 for the building and the site. The applicant is proposing just under 300 square feet, so the pylon sign and the two wall signs are proposed. I do have, Mr. Hillgardner is here. Brian may get into some discussion with the traffic, the effects of this on existing conditions in the area, and we can certainly get to that as we move through the public hearing. As I indicated, the site is zoned B3, conditional use, through conditional use, outdoor sales and storage is allowed. Staff has been contacted by neighboring property owners concerned with the impact of this development on traffic, the aesthetics of this development, specifically the ownership group of the 200 Highway 13 property. I believe they have represented us here tonight and they may choose to speak to the, to the item as well. Commissioners, I will stand for questions. I do have, I do have three conditions that were outlined in your report. Rick Menelik with Enterprise Holdings is also here. I believe Rick and I can answer any questions you have, and it is a public hearing.
Thank you, Mr. Slania. Commissioners, any questions for Mr. Slania or Hillgardner?
Chris, I just, thank you Chair. Chris, the background mentioned some curbing that needs to be put in by, that's going to satisfy, can, could you clarify that for, is that on the, because of how the properties were developed and what Holiday did, was there no curbing put on the western edge of their property?
Thank you Commissioner. I did include that in the report. I wanted to touch on that here. I'll use this. It has a good depiction of the area that we're talking about. Again, this is a shared easement I indicated between Holiday and Outlot A, or future owners of Outlot A. The property line actually runs right down the middle of this drive aisle. So it is 12 and a half feet. The drive lane is 12 and a half feet on either side of the drive lane. Holiday put this in for proper circulation, emergency vehicle access around their site. A concrete curb was not installed on this segment. Staff anticipated there would be development on this Outlot A. We didn't know what the design was going to look like or the out, or the layout. We did not require Holiday at that time to install a concrete curb. We anticipated that would be torn up or destroyed during construction. Knowing what the final design will look like, we are conditioning our approval on Enterprise installing the curb as part of their site work. Again, that will satisfy the zoning criteria and help with stormwater management for the site.
Because theoretically, the curb would be on Enterprise's property.
Correct.
Because they're on, okay.
Correct. I can jump to, so here, the red line represents the property line, and you can see how the bituminous falls on either side of that line.
Can you, just a couple more, Chair?
Sure.
Tell me a little bit about the encroachment onto the vet clinic, because it has a condition they need to have turned in.
Certainly.
So they just sort of, they're going to be raising the property of the vet clinic and redoing, because it looked like they're doing retaining walls kind of at two different ends and in the middle it's staying?
Correct. Mr. Chair Commissioners, there is an existing retaining wall along the vet, along this area. To compensate for the grade changes, you can see, everything is falling to the right and to compensate for traffic, excuse me, proper stormwater and grading. The applicant is proposing the grading to the city's right-of-way. That is standard. That's something we can deal with at a staff level. To make these contours work, the applicant is also proposing to step into the adjacent vet clinic for another five to 10 feet to pick up the slopes. There would be not, there would not be significant changes, but they would try to match in what, what they're proposing with the retaining walls. Staff has been told, they're working through this on a private matter between the two property owners. Before permits are pulled, we want to make sure that all those items are addressed and the property owner's aware of what's going on.
Okay, okay. The last question, I have a question about the permeable blacktop?
Yes.
I know we've done that a couple of other times. Is that something that the city requested, or was that something that they chose? I know the stormwater, according to our background, the majority of it's being handled by the pond that was put in for Holiday.
Correct.
So obviously, they're going to tap into stormwater pipes to push it to that pond.
Yes, that is something that the applicant proposed the design. They are just using a limited area right in here, which is intended for customer and employee, or excuse me, I believe those are inventory stalls. So it would be limited traffic, limited on and off traffic, which is what the impervious surface is intended for. It wouldn't be heavy traffic if a heavy vehicle or, or a delivery truck did come through the site. They would not be disturbing the bituminous surface. It's something the city's trying to incorporate into different sites around town. We have some at City Hall just to see how it, over time, how it functions long-term and through the freeze thaw cycles. It's not a requirement, but something the applicant did propose.
Thank you Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Singh?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Chris, I want to follow up on my colleague's question about the storm water. The project when completed would have impervious surface, ground surface of 1.12 acres. That will, kind of weather we are having now, would create a lot of stormwater draining into that pond. Can you, is there an agreement between Enterprise and Holiday for the pond? Because the pond is, was done by Holiday.
Correct.
So I would assume that there will have to be some kind of agreement, written agreement to, so they can use that pond.
Correct. Mr. Chair Commissioners, there will be an agreement, assuming the purchase moves forward, there would be an agreement between Holiday and Enterprise for the treatment of that stormwater that's running off the site. The city would also be a party to that to make sure the, the pond is cleaned out on a, on a regular basis and it meets our requirements. Holiday designed the pond to handle additional capacity. They anticipated selling this outlot and they saw it as a bargaining tool or a, a selling benefit if, if they could address the stormwater ahead of time. So they do have a pipe that is stubbed right in this area, at least up to the property line, that Enterprise can hook up to. And they did design this in a manner to, to take additional water runoff from this site. I think Brian can get into some of those other details if there's question on how that works up. I believe the, the Holiday pond needs to be altered slightly.
Well, at this point, Mr. Chair Commissioners, the pond itself has been designed originally with Holiday to handle the amount of impervious surface with this site. The pervious surface with the pavement is helping. It's actually, you know, being proactive to kind of eliminate some of the immediate runoff that would go to that pond because it will allow for some infiltration or filtration at least. So at this point, there will be some slight modifications to the pond, but it was designed originally to handle actually more impervious than is coming in with this site, so.
It was designed for probably Outlot A, but not the additional lot?
Exactly. It was, it was, it was for Outlot A, but not, but they basically, when they designed it originally, they took the Outlot A plus the additional lot and assumed a very high impervious percentage, and it's actually less than that. So we're comfortable that it meets the city's water resource management.
Thank you. Brian, my assumption is that you are satisfied with the, the pond is adequate to handle the stormwater to be pushed in there.
We're very comfortable with that.
Chair, just one, one more. Chris, you mentioned in your presentation that there will be no maintenance, not even oil changes or anything in, on that property. Everything will probably be done outside.
Correct.
I, I would be interested to hear about the property owners of the 213 West Building to see, because I'm concerned about the comments that you've put in the, in the background for us. This property is at Highway 13 and Nicolet, they're a very visible area. And I'm very pleased with the proposal from the applicant about the fence and the green space. I mean, it will look good when it's done, if everything goes well. So I would like to commend them for doing, for doing that. I would like to hear about the comments from the owners when that time comes. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Mr. Slania, I have a couple of questions. My understanding, the chiropractic building is empty now, is that correct?
I, I do not know the status of that.
Okay. And obviously, the other lot's vacant.
Correct.
And my understanding, and please correct me if I'm wrong, is basically this is business and office, so theoretically, some of the other uses for this area could be a retail shop or a business office development. Would that be correct?
Certainly. Off, there are a number of permitted uses for this district. Office is one, retail is one, a strip center, a strip retail center, a freestanding restaurant, sit-down restaurant would require a conditional use permit, just like the car dealership would. Again, there are, there are limitations, right, shouldn't say limitations. It's a unique site. You can see it very well from Highway 13, but it is not necessarily the easiest site to get to from Highway 13 unless you've done it a few times. It is, it is general business, so it would encompass any of the uses you see along County Road 42.
Because, and the reason I'm asking is because, you know, there's some question about traffic flow and traffic congestion, and I can, we can ask Mr. Menelik this question, but my guess is there's only, there's going to be a limited, obviously, number of people that are going to work there on a daily basis. are going to work there on a daily basis for Enterprise would be the salespeople, basically. So I'm, whatever, I'm guessing 10, 12, whatever, some modest amount like that, as opposed to if it was an office building where you would have, you know, maybe dozens of people coming in every day. Is that, am I off on that, or?
No. Certainly, the applicant can address his staffing levels, but I think even 10 or 12 is on the high end.
Sure.
From the staff standpoint, we see this as a very low traffic generator. Certainly, not every site fits every use. There's no, nothing saying that a fast food would end up here, but it's certainly a much lower use than even a office.
Right.
I should say from a traffic standpoint.
And I'm thinking a traffic standpoint, other than the employees that are showing up every day, you know, the rest of it is going to be spaced out where, you know, there could be five, six, seven, you know, probably at most at one time, and spread out throughout the operating hours.
Correct.
And obviously, the chiropractic building would be demolished and a new, modern building would be replacing it.
Correct.
That's all the questions I have at this time. Thank you. Anything else?
Nothing.
All right. Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Slaney. Mr. Mendelik? Maybe you could step forward. I think maybe there's a question or two for you. If you could start with your name and your business address, please.
Hi, Richard Mendelik. Business address is 2775 Blue Water Road in Eagan.
All right. And what is your position with Enterprise?
Operations manager.
Maybe you could just answer my question first. Roughly, how many employees would you anticipate staffing that site?
Yes, Mr. Chair. Approximately 10 to 12 people would be at the site. And then, you are correct as far as the, the traffic that you had indicated, it's that level of staff, and then the traffic beyond that would be period, spaced throughout the day. And our hours are kind of offsetting from your normal rush hours as well.
Because you're not opening until nine, is my understanding.
Correct.
So you wouldn't have the 7:30, 8 o'clock rush, and you may have people coming after 4:30 or 5:00, I suppose.
Right. Yeah, we're open until 7:00, Monday through Thursday.
And in your, in your other sites' experience, I'm guessing that you have, you know, there can be obviously slow times and fast times, but a rush is probably five or six people, I'm guessing.
We would love it if there were a rush of that many people at one time. But, yeah, it's, it is pretty sparse relative to other businesses. Even our rental business has some of that, you know, morning, afternoon rush, but it is sparsely impactful to traffic.
And then the last question, let me ask this. You've seen, you've done a very nice job in the proposal. Any of the conditions or anything else you want us to know about the conditions, or are you comfortable with the conditions that we have in here?
We're finding a way to work with the conditions. The site has been pretty challenging with us, and there have been multiple objects, obstacles to overcome, but we've been working our way through those and working with the staff and whatnot, so we've been able to overcome the hurdles that have been, that we've been coming across.
Okay, great. Any other questions from Commissioners?
None.
All right. Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
This is a public hearing. At this time, I will open the public hearing. Anyone who wishes to step forward and comment or have any questions, well, please feel free to do so and start out with your name and address, please.
My name's Tim Manning. I live at 980 Pershing Circle, it's south side of Crystal Lake. And I am one-third owner of the 200 West Highway 13 building. So I'm representing both myself and the partnership that operates that building.
All right. Thank you, sir, for coming this evening.
I'd like to start out with maybe a couple of questions. It's my understanding that a conditional use permit has to be granted for this particular use that is cracked.
Yep.
So if you would choose to not recommend that and the council would not change it, you'd have no problem with the applicant coming back against the city for any reason?
We're not, I mean, we're not the lawyers, so we're, basically, we look at what the proposal is, we look at the conditions for a conditional use permit, and we make our decision based on that, and then the council would do the same. We, we don't, at least myself, I guess speaking for myself, I don't factor in about what the applicant would do with the city. That's not our purview.
I understand.
Yeah, what we do, we just, we just make a recommendation to the city council. They have the final say as to what they want to do.
Right, I understand that, but thank you for clarifying. I don't believe that this use could be considered the highest and best use of that property, particularly since an office building could be built in that site with no conditional use permits or any other requirements. Am I right in saying that?
I would agree, the office building can be constructed without any conditional use permit.
Okay. As a taxpayer in the city, I would like to see that property used where the tax return is highest and best. A used car lot, which is what this is, and I've heard that term used here, so I don't think I'm stretching the case at all. It is a used car lot. Whether it's a used car lot, selling cars damaged and poor state, old or so forth, or new, relatively new cars, doesn't matter. It's a used car lot parked next to an office building, our office building. I've got a couple more pointed, detailed questions as I think of them. There's that material referred to, I believe, as permeable along that one, along the portion that faces our property. I guess my experience is it's tough to maintain, but I'm more concerned about, is that landscaping, green space, or is that batuminous? Or hard surface? And how has the city looked at that?
I guess if you can answer that question?
I can address that. The pervious pavement is hard surface. It is parked on, it is used as parking lot. The ordinance allows the applicant or any developer to take a certain percentage of that pervious surface and count it towards green space. It's our, the city's initiative or the city's encouragement of property owners using the pervious pavement. So we allow them to count 2.5% of that towards their landscaping.
I'm not concerned if it's one way or another, I just wanted to know what, how do you look at it? Which brings me to another parking question. At the front, or what I presume to be the front or east side of the building, maybe clarify it that way. There's some parking that's bordered by a curb, a B-12 curb versus normal for that application, be it a B-618 or B-612. It's my understanding, the reason that that is done, is that now they can drive vehicles over a four-inch curb, whereas over a six-inch is more, more of a chore, you might say, or more of a problem. But that's not the part I'm concerned about. The part I'm concerned about is that allows them to double-load those, what would be driveways or drive areas, by using that lesser curb, lesser height. You now have a way that you can double-load, and my concern is that more cars will be there than what you and I anticipated looking at the plan. Does that make sense? Is that why the four-inch-high curb was used?
Mr. Chair, let me, let me jump to a...
Sure. Can you?
I just want to pull something up so we can... Mr. Chair Commissioners, the applicant, the applicant is proposing stalls here and here for customers. Everything around the perimeter here and out here is inventory. There is an overhang. The applicant does have, is proposing to put vehicles under the overhang on the concrete pad, and there are also, as we said, double loader in this case, triple-loaded stalls intended for here. The proper, the developer is obligated to maintain a emergency vehicle access through the site that is through here, up, and then out into the Holiday property. The site is, is designed in such a way, fire department would not try to turn around in here. They would keep going forward. If, if blocking the drivelanes or the fire lanes becomes an issue, that is something staff can address with the property owner, with the developer, to make sure those sufficient functions are done. I can't say that a lesser curb is something the applicant is proposing specifically for that purpose or not, but I can say they need to provide that circulation.
That brings me to another, I guess I think it was a minor item in the overall proposed site here. That stucco on the building's surface, as I understand it, and as was said here. When we built our office building, we were required to use brick. There was no option. We either used brick or we weren't going to get a permit. I noticed that most of that area over there is still brick buildings. In fact, I couldn't name one that isn't. Maybe my partners can, or maybe you can. But it's all been brick. And I guess if we got to look at what is the rear of the building, at least it could be dressed up with brick, the whole building. I don't think that's too much of a request, and hopefully you would consider that. I think at this point, I'd turn the floor over to one of my other partners.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Manning.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me to speak. My name is Kurt Anistvett. I live at 850 Blue Bill Bay Road in Burnsville. And I am a partner, not only in the building that Tim Manning and Pat Gannon, who are both here, are partners, but I'm also a partner in the CPA firm that offices and takes up about 5,000 square feet of one of those buildings. And we are all strongly opposed to having a used car lot across the street from us. There are much better uses from a monetary standpoint now that both of these lots have been up for sale at the same time. As you notice, neither of them went anywhere, as long as there was only one. But once they both came for sale, now they're available. And you ought to be able to find a developer that is much more interested in putting an office building, and you will get four and five times the real estate taxes that you will out of this surface lot. And is this really what we want across in the heart of the city? We're trying to attract a nice motel on the other side of the city, and is this what we want them to look at? If it is, we ought to put it up there on Nicolet, right there where the vacant space is by Cub. You know, that would be a lot closer if that's where you really want to do that. It's ridiculous to have a used car lot here when the used car lots are down on 13 and 5, or down by the Burnsville Center. You know, it's just not an appropriate use. You know, we have the Arts Building there, we have Pond America, we have Progressive, we have Grand Slam, we have Skateville, we have Farmers Insurance, we have Antiques Minnesota, all of them nice, decent-looking buildings. And now we want to put in a used car lot? People, come on, let's consider what we've got here. Like I say, we're, I can throw a rock to the heart of the city from my office building. And we are trying to get this heart of the city, you know, we finally got it rolling, and we really want to put a used car lot here? This is inappropriate use. And like I say, with both of them together, you ought to be able to attract a developer who will put in a nice office building or some type of a medical clinic or whatever, but, and bring you four times the revenue. Our building sits there at a million-two, and this place will sit in here at three or 400,000 on your tax rolls. And think of that site being larger than what our site is and how much better an office building you could have there. Like I say, there's room down on 5 and 13 where the other used car dealers are at, and that's where it belongs. Or down by the Burnsville Center, where all the other car lots are. It does not belong sprinkled in and amongst office buildings. Thank you.
Thank you. Any, any other individuals that would wish to speak to this issue at this time? All right. With that, I will close the public hearing. Any other questions, or I'll look for comments at this time? Go ahead, Commissioner Singh.
Mr. Chair, as I said earlier, I was very concerned about the comments that the owner of the building next door made to staff. It was that important because staff mentioned it in the background, the information that we received. Listening to the two gentlemen, the owners of the building, in my opinion, it makes a lot of sense what they're saying. I know that our outlot was vacant for quite a while, and I think the two lots going up for sale and Enterprise willingness to put a car dealership there, I commend them for doing that. However, listening to the last speaker, it makes a lot of sense if we can get the appropriate business, whether it's, it's an office building or some other business that would use that location and contribute more in taxes. The negatives of that is that that's not our function to look at the taxes. Our function is to look at the, the use of the land space and how appropriate it is and whether we should recommend it or not. So I, first of all, I commend Mr. Manning and Ms. Anna Smith for coming and sharing their views on... views on this matter. I will take that into consideration when the time has come for our recommendations. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh. Mr. Bradrick?
Thank you, Chair. In some preparation for that, I spent some time at the property Saturday afternoon. Because of the background, my understanding of the concern was based around traffic. And there are some, you know, I think there's some issues in that area that had nothing to do with this property, that were, I think there's some new traffic coming from Walmart, and the whole River Ridge Boulevard, River Ridge Lane intersections, very difficult. I do think, as I looked at this and saw the traffic, I think the traffic to the site, the easiest, if someone's driving by, is probably going to be through the Holiday site. I think for them to find the other way in from the west could certainly be done. But I appreciate the homeowner, or the building owner's concerns. Did we have any other, obviously the notices went out to the entire neighborhood. Did Rixman, or Grand Slam, or the insurance company across the street, any other responses from any other building owners?
Staff was not directly contacted. I know a number of property owners had concerns, and they were reaching out to the council, but I wasn't privy to those conversations.
So with that said, this is a conditional use permit, and we, as a city, have done some zoning from the standpoint that if people apply, this is, whether it can fall through without a CUP or a CUP. I know some latitudes from declining a CUP, but not a lot. It's more about, does the conditional use permit meet the zoning of the area? And did they meet some conditions to make sure that things were appropriately managed, like traffic and parking? So I respect that. I do have a hard time, from my chair, landing and making a decision about who goes where based on tax base. I understand that as someone that lives in the city, but I have a hard time landing in that field, given our stature.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chair.
I guess I agree with what Mr. Bradrick says in that regard, is from what my understanding, my position is, I'm to look at this as if it fits within the use, and whether it is appropriate in that locale. It fits, I think, perfectly in that regard. The tax base, I don't think that's my purview to make a decision based on. That certainly would be, the council's, could be a council consideration. I have no idea if this is a wanted piece of property, or if not. I do know that the chiropractic office building has been there since I've lived in Burnsville, which is 18-plus years, and it's been vacant as well, next door. You know, it's interesting, and I've been here for three years, I've seen a lot of these type of proposals come before us, and all of them usually have some variations where the setback isn't far enough, or they're not looking, or we're, you know, giving a variance on the green space, or something else. When I was first reading through this, it was interesting because, other than essentially adding a couple trees for some aesthetics, they've met every requirement. There is nothing that's needed to be for a deviation, essentially. They talked about the building, because, location because of the easements. That sounds like it's an issue as far as putting like a very large office building, maybe you can fit it in there. But then you're looking at potentially parking issues, I would guess, I'm obviously speculating. But I see that there with the easements and some of the other issues here, that there are problems with this spot. So in looking at this, my consideration is, while I appreciate the tax base concern, I don't think that can be my concern from my position in this seat. That would be more of a political concern from a council's point of view. What I see is a proposal that obviously benefits the space from what it has been now, and has been in the past, and they've done everything that the city of Burnsville has requested that they do to meet the conditional use permit in this situation. And again, I guess I just don't think it's my position to select the business that wants to go there, that's apparently willing to step up and buy that piece of property. Commissioner Singh.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I do not want what I said earlier to be taken out of context. I understand the points raised by the two owners of the business office building. However, our role here is not to recommend a conditional use permit because it brings in more taxes or not, the project will bring in more taxes or not. That's not within our purview. That's, as you rightly said, Mr. Chair, that's the call of the city council. I do understand your concern, and it's a very valid concern, but it is not within our purview to make that call. As long as the application has met all the requirements for the CUP, then I have no choice but to support it.
Thank you, Commissioner Singh.
Chair, I would like to make a motion.
Feel free. Thank you.
I move that the planning commission recommend the city council approval, the preliminary and final plat to be known as Enterprise First Edition, and a conditional use permit for outdoor sales located at 12-445 River Ridge Boulevard, with the three conditions listed in our background.
Thank you.
Make your second, Mr. Chair.
Motion made by Commissioner Bradrick, seconded by Commissioner Singh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes 3-0. And this will go to the council on Tuesday, July 8th. Good luck, everybody. Thank you. The next item on the agenda is a public hearing, Richard Schultz, for a rezoning from B3 General Business to B3 PUD Development Stage PUD, to add two stories of office space to an existing building exceeding the 35-foot height standard, allow warehouse manufacturing, assembly, and exterior display use, and preliminary plot of a one-lot commercial subdivision to be known as Caliber Edition at 12600 Frontage Road West.
Thank you, members of the commission and the audience. We have a kind of a similar situation. This property is basically kitty corner, if you will, from the previous site we were looking at. This site is located on the southwest corner of the interchange of I-35W and Highway 13. And similar to the last application, it's a site that's got great visibility from the highways, but it's difficult to maneuver to get there if you're a customer, or somebody from, you know, looking to go there to buy something. So kind of interesting the way these come to be. The application does include a rezoning. The site is zoned B3 General Business, very similar to our last application. They are requesting a rezoning to B3 PUD. And the majority of the reasons for the planned unit development are related to the existing site. The existing site and building have a number of setback deviations and things which we'll get into. And the majority of the PUD is to memorialize those existing conditions so that they can continue on and not have to deal with deviations in the future related to their property. PUD is also requested to allow for a mix of land uses. Typically, in the B3 district, you have more retail-type uses. B3 is our same zoning district that we have for the Burnsville Shopping Center, all along basically County Road 42, restaurants, et cetera. In this case, the applicant currently has a business in Burnsville, and they are seeking to expand. And their uses are more related to warehouse, with some manufacturing and assembly of products. And they're also looking for an exterior display area for products to be able to be shown at some point in the future. The third part of the application is to consider preliminary and final plat of a one-lot subdivision, and it'd be known as Caliber Edition. The subject site, as we indicated, is right near the interchange of I-35 and Highway 13. Highway 13 is to the north. And then we've got the on-ramp, if you will, from 13 to 35W. The site sits in the old Best Buy location. Best Buy was situated here for a number of years. A couple of years ago, they relocated to another shopping center in Burnsville. And this building has pretty much sat empty since 2012, and looking for a new tenant. We do have a business district, both to the west and to the south. This would be where Perkins is located, another business office project that is owned by the same owner, Mr. Schultz. And then there's an apartment complex, which is High Density Residential and PUD located in this area. The subject site, as I indicated, is the existing Best Buy, or former Best Buy building. And the site works very well for the applicant. It's a large facility that they can utilize for, their primary need is more space to do warehousing, storage. Their products are not sold directly to the public. They are shipped to distributors and dealerships. Caliber Inc. does a number of things, but primarily, they manufacture and assemble parts and products associated with trailers, for example, for the ATV industry, boating, those types of things. They've got a number of specific products and product lines that they have. And that's what they need, the expansion area for. In addition to that, they're looking for additional office space as well. And part of the project that we'll discuss is including a couple of additions to the site. But basically, the site is, as you see it up on the screen, the existing parking is there. Nothing is proposed to be changed from that standpoint. And the accesses, they're currently two, one to the north, and one to the east. The most significant thing about the site that has happened since the building was built in 1974 is, at some point in time, a large part of the property was acquired by Mendat to provide for the West Frontage Road, and possibly even part of the corridor for the on-ramps. So when the applicant actually did the site survey work for the property, they found that they actually had less land to work with than they thought they had due to that Mendat acquisition. In terms of planned unit developments, we look at what are the benefits, and what are the deviations that are being requested? In this case, the applicant also could have filed for variances for all of the various setbacks and things. But from a staff standpoint, we had suggested that they make application for a PUD. That seems to be the most-used vehicle, if you will, zoning tool that we have to accommodate situations like this. As far as the PUD benefits, we're looking at the adaptive reuse of an existing building that's sat vacant for a number of years. It will allow an existing business to expand and add to the local economy. Building has good visibility, but as I indicated, it's difficult if you're trying to lure a customer base to find your product. It's difficult to get there. The business that Caliber Inc. has is a great fit for this particular building. It is a little bit more industrial-oriented than pure retail, but because of the building location and the topography, and its relationship to other buildings, et cetera, around it, it's actually a very good fit for this type of use. The building has existing loading facilities, which will be expanded and utilized. It has good accessibility to major transportation routes. And it also has the larger areas on the main floor that are needed for the assembly processing and warehousing components of the business. It's situated so that the activity areas on the site are really on the eastern part of the building, and these are separated from the existing businesses by topography. This building actually sits lower than the businesses to the south. And also, the residential, the high-density residential apartments are on the southwest corner of the property, but they are bounded by apartments, or excuse me, by garage units. And really, with the existing trees, very mature tree cover out there, the topography, and just the location of where all the buildings and areas are, this makes a really good site for what the applicant's business is. Caliber is looking at making a major investment into the community and into this site. It's a long-term investment, and they would like to be there for a long time in the future. They are also looking at the possibility of another tenant, that being a last tech solutions. And they are also an existing Burnsville business, and looking for possibility for expansion opportunity as well. The deviations that we'll talk about, number one is to allow the mix of uses. Until very recently, we did allow office warehouse as a conditional use. If you recall, we made some changes to the ordinance, we did a number of housekeeping changes, and the warehousing part of it is a conditional use. In addition to that, because some of the assembly that's needed for the project, some of their tooling and different types of work that they do are more processing, so they come into line in terms of the zoning ordinance with more of the manufacturing-type use. So the PUD is to allow those mix of uses in this particular site, and also to allow for the exterior display area. The proposal includes the addition of two stories of office on part of the building, the north part of the building. And the ordinance indicates that whenever a building is to exceed 35 feet in the B3 zone, you need a conditional use permit. In this case, when those two stories of office are added, that increases the building height to 55 feet. So that's another reason for deviation, if you will. Our fire department has reviewed the application, so as our building inspections department, we do have the capacity to serve the site with the existing fire equipment. So there should not be any issues from a staff perspective in terms of accommodating the increased height. The next one is related to existing building setbacks. There are a couple of places that I'll show you on a slide where the existing building does not meet the current setback standards. The first one we'll talk about is the northeast corner of the building. And then there's also a proposed deck that is shown. And they have got 25-foot setback, which, that setback changes when the building height increases. There is a dual standard for height. It's the setback equals either 30 feet, or one and a half times the height of the building. So in this case, because they're investing in the building, adding the two stories of office space, that increases the setback. It's really not through any particular condition, you know, that the applicant has done. It's just that the standard change is due to the height. So they're asking for deviation in terms of that setback. They are also proposing about a 400-square-foot addition to the eastern side of the building, and that'll have a 40-foot setback, again, instead of that 82.5-foot setback. So that is another deviation that would be needed to accommodate the addition, even though the addition will be setback further than the existing building. There's also a deviation to allow the southwest corner of the existing building to have a 27-foot, as opposed to 30-foot setback. Again, that's... Again, that's an existing condition there. And number six, to allow the existing parking lot to have a three-foot, instead of 30-foot setback. Again, an existing condition, nothing that this applicant is doing. It's just, that's how the property was developed back in 1974. The seventh deviation is related to perimeter landscaping. Landscaping is supposed to be, should be 56% of the perimeter. The existing site has got 52%, so they're not making any changes in that, requesting that, again, that 52% become memorialized for the green space perimeter around the site. And the last deviation that we'll talk about, this is the one deviation that staff does not support. This is related to partial parapet that is shown on the north side for signage to be accommodated. And the reason that staff is not supportive of this is the city did just amend its ordinance a few years ago to deal with this particular situation. And we do require now that either the parapet, the parapet, extend around the entire addition or that it be removed. So that would be one question, again, for the planning commission to consider. Staff, our only, our only item that we do not support is that last deviation. This just quickly shows where some of the existing deviations are. The ones in red are due to the existing building, where we've got some encroachments. The front property line is this line here. And when the applicant first came in and was looking at the property, they thought that they owned much more land up to the north. When they actually did the surveying work and the title work, everybody's pretty much shocked to see how much land had been removed from the site for the right-of-way acquisition. And that essentially is the cause for the majority of the deviations on the north side. It's because of that right-of-way acquisition. The small addition that we talked about, the 400 square feet, is in this location here. As I said, it is, it's got a 40-foot setback. It's setback further from the north property line than the existing building, but it still doesn't meet that 82.5-foot setback. So that's why the deviation's noted. Here is where we've got a slight, slight encroachment of the building over the common property line. So basically, looking at a 27-foot building setback instead of 30, to, again, allow that encroachment, again, an existing condition. Existing condition, again, is the parking lot currently here, has got a three-foot setback. We're proposing to allow PUD deviation to allow that situation to also continue to exist. The eighth deviation, the one that we had indicated that staff did not support, is on the north side of the building, and this would be facing out, out to the Highway 13, I-35 area. They are proposing a seven-foot-tall parapet section here. And this is the section that has the issue with the variance. And so staff is recommending, as a condition, that either this parapet be extended around the entire two-story addition or that it be removed. And that is one of the later conditions. The preliminary plat is very simple, it's straightforward, a lot of information here, but it's based on existing conditions. They're looking to just plat the property. That is something that's required by city council policy. So they have submitted all of the information related to the plat. One of the changes that's proposed on the exterior, this would be the east side of the building. They do have some issues with drainage and problems with water encroaching or coming down towards the building in this location. So what's proposed is they're showing, basically, the removal of, I believe it's three trees in this area. They'll be installing a trench drain, and then that will have a pipe that connects to the existing storm sewer. They'll be installing a new manhole out here, but that's needed in order to correct an existing drainage problem for the property. Even with that small amount of green space that's lost, the overall green space doesn't change because it's only, you know, a small amount of square footage, so the percentages remain the same. The addition that we talked about is in this location, basically, a new entrance for the building. They are also making accommodations for ADA disability, or, excuse me, ADA accessibility. There's a ramp that is going to be installed in this location to get to the new entrance staircase. And basically, a new entrance reception area for the building, an elevator and staircase within the subtle 400-square-foot addition. This plan gives you the existing floor plan, or, excuse me, the floor plan of the existing building. And here's where we show about some of the different uses that we're talking about. The majority of the area would be used for storage and warehouse, and that's the midsection. And as you can see, this works very well in conjunction with where the existing loading facilities are in the building. And again, this would be the new addition that we're talking about. The area where we're talking about the manufacturing-type process is a little less than a quarter of the square footage of the main floor in this area. They're looking at a potential here for some retail warehouse. And when we talked about the outside display area, it's proposed in this location. The future tenant that they are contemplating moving in is a, they manufacture, like, play areas, outdoor play areas. And what they're thinking is that if they are able to get that tenant, they would like to be able to install that surface in this area so that people coming to look at the equipment would be able to actually see what that surfacing material is.
So that's a display area?
Yes, this is a display area out here. This is on the existing hard surface area. Will not be additional hard surface that's needed. Then there are some other R&amp;D and office areas located on the first floor in this location. When we get to the second floor, this would be all-new office for the, for a future tenant. And the third floor is where Caliber Edition will be occupying with the majority of the office spaces. They are looking at, I believe, currently have about 21 employees and are looking to expand in about the next three years and need the office facilities, conference facilities, in order to accommodate that. Some of the uses also do include an exercise area. And what these are here, this is a small, it's a deck addition, actually, onto the building on the third floor, where you'd be able to walk out and really have some nice views, and it's an area for the employees to be able to get out and get some fresh air. On the back side of the existing building, basically, this would remain open. And they would install railings around this area. So again, there would be another open-air-type deck, if you will, that is actually situated over the current roof of the building. This just gives you a quick view of the entrance, the new entrance that's proposed, that small addition, the ramp and the new stairs. And this is showing you, the two-story addition for offices does not cover the entire building. It only covers about the north quarter of the building in this area here. And again, this is just a little bit larger picture, showing this, again, would be some open-air kind of decking space. This is actually a deck that's to be constructed on the outside of the building, and then all of the office spaces and the connection with the elevator and staircase. As far as the building materials, the addition will be very attractive. I think it'll be a huge improvement to the appearance of the building. They'll have large banks of windows on all four sides, as you can see in these drawings. In addition to that, it's a little bit difficult to see, but this would be that deck addition. So we've got, you know, linear cable-type railing in this location. And then this is the back part of the building that will remain open and also have exterior area there. Primarily, the material that is proposed is going to be probably an EPIS-type of material, complementary colors with the existing building. And as you can see, this shows the new staircase and entry, common, the same refline, if you will, as the rest of the office space. From a staff perspective, we want the planning commission to know that the applicant has worked very diligently. They worked very hard on this site. And this is a project that staff is fully supportive of, and we think it's a very good fit for this location and a very good opportunity to provide a place for local business to expand. We recommend approval, subject to four conditions. Number one would be that the former Best Buy, the blue gridiron structure, be removed from the east and south sides of the building. Two, that the plans be modified to remove that short section of parapet. That's where the signage was, and that gets to that last, and only deviations staff did not support. So that that either be removed or wrapped entirely around the addition, as required by the ordinance. There is a trash enclosure that's on the plan. Sorry, I missed that. It's actually for the adjacent property to the south, that the same owner, Mr. Schultz, also owns. But the trash enclosure for this site does encroach over that common lot line. So we are, have added a condition that that be relocated to get rid of that, that encroachment, so they don't have title issues in the future. So that's where the trash enclosure, that's where this condition comes into play. And the last is that at the time of, when they want to install signs, they will need separate sign applications. The amount of signage that's proposed is well under the allowed square footages by the ordinance. And with the exception of that one deviation, that's the only issue that staff has. Otherwise, we are very much in support of the project. I know that the applicant, we've got several folks here, they can speak toward the project and would be willing to do that. And other than that, I can stand for questions.
Thank you, Ms. Geros. Commissioners, any questions?
Chair, I have a couple.
Go ahead.
Deb, can you clarify, for the first condition, remove the gridiron? The one on the north side of the building was just decorative for the Best Buy signage. Your plan here, though, does show all of the gridiron still intact for the entrance, with what I would assume to be the tenant.
This would be, yes, this is.
And that would be what you reflected to as the?
Correct.
East side, correct?
Yes.
Okay. So our conditions, as are stated today, show removing the one on the north side of the building, which is in pretty tough repair, and then this one that's above the current remodel that was probably done for Best Buy. Okay. And I kind of misunderstood when I was reading the background about the parapet walls. I just want to clarify a couple of things. Can you, and I kind of remember this, but, you know, I've slept in Eaton since we talked about this last. From the standpoint of the, I was, when I read the background, I was not in support. I was assuming there was going to be a separate parapet wall for the other tenant's signage, different than what we see there in the center.
That's correct. They would, they would be looking at another similar parapet structure elsewhere on the building for a second tenant.
I didn't make that up.
Correct.
Okay.
They don't have that tenant, is not in place at this time.
Okay.
But trying to make accommodation for that.
And obviously, that would be another parapet wall that's facing north. But is there a parapet wall above the existing entrance, what used to be the entrance into Best Buy? There, it's above that, right there, where, is that?
I'm not sure if that's a parapet, or if that's, I am not sure of that. I think that that is part of the building. I don't know that that's a parapet, if the applicant is.
We, I guess we can clarify that when, that was my question. And the green space issue, I think that's just was put in because that, the dock doors used to be there when it was an appliance store, and Best Buy closed them in, so.
Yep.
Right, that's, that's really no issue. So, Chair, that's the end of my current questions.
Thank you. Commissioner Sein?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Mr. Bradrick touched on one of the areas that I had noted here, so I'm not going to go back there. I think I agree with you, Deb, that this is a wonderful fit, this building, for the business that the applicant proposed to have in there. And I think the upgrades that they're doing and hoping to get an additional tenant, I think will, this will really spruce up that property. I think it will be great. You know, I don't have too many concerns about it, really. At first, I was concerned, after I read the background information. I was concerned about the deviations regarding the setback. But listening to you, and I defer to you when it comes to that, and that you don't have too much concern about those. And the other thing, too, that the applicant got this property and didn't realize that Mindot had taken part of the properties. And so he's faced with less square footage to put in what he wants there. So I take that into consideration when it comes to this. So I really don't have any concern. The trash, you suggest this, the proposal is for the trash enclosure to be, to be inside?
No.
Relocated on the lot to the south?
Yep, I apologize for that. There are actually a couple. This trash enclosure here is the one that we're suggesting the condition for, so that that is moved totally off the common lot line, because the land will be sold to Caliber Edition. There is an existing trash compactor unit in this location here that has been in place with Best Buy for years and years. There are no proposed changes to that.
Okay. So that will be the main trash?
Yes.
Area.
It's the compactor. Yes, so everything stays within the compactor.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. Ms. Geros, a couple of quick questions, I think, on the parapet. If we go back to the one showing the outside with the parapet, that one, thanks. So to wrap the whole thing, would have to go all the way along that front, it, front there, and then down the side and come back on the back end, too?
Yes. The ordinance calls for, that's what the ordinance was changed to, to have it, so that it wraps around the entire addition, only the addition part, not the rest of the building.
Okay, that, all right. And obviously, that's not, there's no, there's no additional footage that's needed for, like, HVAC or anything that's going on top of that addition, I assume?
They have, there is plan here. They have shown that any other equipment that they need to have does meet the screening standards. So I, I'm not positive of that. That's probably more of a question for the applicant. But there may be a need for some upgrades to, just to be able to accommodate their particular business.
Thanks, that's all I have. Anything else? Thank you, Ms. Geros. If a representative from the applicant would may like to step forward at this time, that would be great. Start with your name and business address and your position, please.
My name is Ernesty Lang, and I presently have a business in 12571 Oliver Avenue, South. It's down by the old Sam's Club, that new building down there. We were the first tenants in there and had a six-year lease, and that's coming up. And so we're looking to get it in our own building. And so... And so, yeah, we desire to have a purchase agreement for the Best Buy building and would like to, to move, move our businesses up there. Essentially, I have a couple of businesses, like, like Deb said, Caliber, which manufactures and sells products, actually, you know, around the world. A lot for this recreation industry, as well as some custom parts. The other, the other business does rubber and elastomer products that are mostly sold to OEMs, and those are mostly in the U.S., and also through distributors, but they're molded rubber products, so.
Well, let me ask you about the, the parapet. How, how, how wedded to you are the, for the, the parapet signage that we've been discussing here? What, what's your?
You know what? I guess, I think it looks better. I mean, I don't know about you guys, but, and actually, the drawing just shows one sign. We were thinking about doing, I have two main companies, Caliber and Elastec, so I was thinking about doing one on the right and one on the left. So is it a deal breaker? Probably not, but it's, it's, it's a nice place for big letters, and if my other option would be to put them between the window rows, probably, which only gives me maybe five and a half feet. And I think the letters may get lost a little bit. I'm not exactly sure how, how they, how legible they'd be from, from 35 or from, from 13.
Any discussion or how much it would cost, the difficulty of just wrapping the whole top, the addition?
Yeah, that would be considerable.
Extension.
That'd be considerable dollars, and that would, that would void the, you know, that would void the, the, okay, project. Any questions, Commissioner?
This is not concerning the use of the thing, but I'm always interested in, in jobs for people in Burnsville area with this. Obviously, you will be needing more staff, and can you tell us approximately how many people you think you'd have working there?
Well, between the two businesses, plus a couple startup businesses that I'm working with, we'll be adding staff. I mean, for instance, companies have been growing pretty significantly, probably averaging 25, 30% a year. Caliber last year grew at 42%, and Elastec grew, it's in single digits, but they grew. But this year, Elastec is up 50-plus percent in the first year to date. Caliber is up about 25%, I believe. So, and then with the additional companies, we'll be adding staff, you know, we're adding staff right along. So my plan is to grow 25% a year. I mean, I'm shooting for 30, but if I can get 20, 25, which is a nice steady growth, not uncontrolled growth, but a nice stable business for, for the area. And I, I lived in Burnsville for, for 23 years. It'll be 23 years in, in October. Kids went to Burnsville High School, son played basketball, daughter played volleyball, so we're members of the community, so I'd like to stay in Burnsville.
Well, I thank you for your commitment to Burnsville. You know, I've always said that Burnsville is the best place to live, to work, and to have your business, and to shop. And people like you helped to make that happen, and I personally appreciate it very much, and I thank you.
Thank you.
Commissioner?
I have just a couple of questions.
Yeah.
The conditions, as they were presented to us, there was the, the, I'm assuming the one with the sign permit, but the three, the removing the, the gridiron from both sides of the building, do you have any, any concerns?
You know what? I, you know, I don't have a problem removing the one from the north side. Personally, I see no reason to remove the other one. It's on the, you can't really see it from the freeway, from any highways, and essentially, it would maybe make my, that space, that retail space that I was going to lease, it might give that more of a separate entrance presence versus, versus, you know, so we'll have our entrance to the north, and if I sublease it, the other entrance will look, will be to the south, and it'll just kind of help separate the entities. So I, I strongly oppose taking that one down. One, because I think it's great, I mean, you don't, we can paint it, I mean, it's, it'd be good for signage, and two, it'd be expensive to take down, and I'm already investing a lot of money, and I don't really, and it's, you know, if I take it down, there could be two huge pillars there that have nothing on them.
Hmm.
So it'll look, to me, it'll look silly. And there, in front of that, there is a parapet. You asked about the, if there was a parapet. That is a parapet that sticks up, like you guys don't like, but now it's kind of behind that gridiron, so it, it kind of ties the whole thing together, and I think it looks just fine, personally, but.
Okay. Thank you very much.
Yep.
Can't believe you've been there six years. I didn't think that building where you're at today was six years old, but.
We were, we were the first ones in there.
Seems like they just built that yesterday, so.
Yeah, so.
All right, I don't have any other questions. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sir. This is a, a public hearing. I'll open the public hearing at this time. Anybody who wishes to comment on the proposal, please step forward at this time. Seeing no one, I will close the public hearing. Any, look for, I guess, comments or questions at this time? Specifically, I guess, for?
I don't have any questions.
Okay.
I'm ready with the motion, too.
All right, well, I, I guess my only question is, are we, do we need to discuss at all the, the parapet and/or the removal of the old Best Buy grid?
I was going to ask Chris about the gridiron. But he has said that, you know, to remove one, if you keep the other one, it will give the tenant the separate entryway. What's the deal in this?
I'll let, I'll go first, but then let Deb follow up. From a, from a staff standpoint, we're looking for, we're looking for consistency across the building. So if this were a multi-tenant building, multi-tenant shopping center, they were making improvements to one end, we'd look for those same improvements to be replicated on the other end. Certainly, there, there is some level of discretion with that, but it's, it's for consistency across the board.
Thank you. Deb?
Yep, that's primarily it. It's a, I think this is very similar to the Tri-State Bobcat application with the Burnsville Bull sign. If you recall, their staff had recommended, you know, removal of that. This is primarily, these were put on the Best Buy locations to support their signage, so that's why we talked about removing it. It's not very attractive in its current state. Painting at a minimum, I would think, would be required, because there is some, some rust and things. But basically, it's to be consistent with the ordinance, which was just recently changed, so.
Quick question.
If we, if we say recommend this, can that be worked out later on between you and staff and the applicant? Because I, I don't see this as very critical, I mean, it's aesthetics, and there's some discretion, too, on it, so.
That's something, you know, for the planning commission, it's totally within your purview to take a look at those things, and if you would like to forward a, a different recommendation, that's totally within your, your purview to do, you've taken additional testimony and information and heard from the applicant, so. We're, we're recommending just based, you know, based on following the ordinance standards, so that's where the staff recommendation is coming from.
I guess my, my thought on this, you know, from my own personal opinion, I don't, I don't mind the, the parapet, and I think if the, an ordinance, or an ordinance, a condition was added to spruce up the, the old grid work, I understand, you know, taking it down is probably expensive. It does add some distinction if there's going to be a separate tenant there. Obviously, the quid pro quo here, or the offset, is that, you know, the, the ordinance was recently amended to not allow this. You know, I'm very torn, because I, I think it's a great, it's a great situation for this building. It's a great addition to Burnsville. I'm in, I'm always in favor of, of, you know, accommodating businesses and people that are trying to expand in this tough environment and, and add jobs and make use of, of buildings that are, are sitting around and try to make it as easy for them as possible. So my personal opinion is, I don't have a problem with it, but, you know, from my perspective, I guess if we're looking at it just from an ordinance perspective, it should be in there, and I guess left up to the city council to make a decision as to whether they, that can be jiggled around. That would be my, my thought, I guess, at this point, but I'm open to questions or comment.
Mr. Chair, I think they have just told us that we have some discretion, and that's number one. Condition, the former Best Buy blue gridiron structure shall be removed from both. Can, if you remove one, the one that will be your, your entrance and leave the, that's what I think you said, that.
The one that's, the east one, the big one, you can't see that unless you're in the parking lot.
Yeah.
The other one, you can see from 35 and from 13.
Yep.
I have no problem taking that.
Okay. Can, can we amend that, that condition?
I, I don't have a problem with that, if.
I'm.
Go ahead.
Chair, I, I would be in support of, I think we're, we're going here. I, I believe the one to the north is, the one that's in the worst shape and wouldn't fit in with the facade of the building. And I would assume, given the amount of money the building owner's going to spend, they'll paint the one in front of the old entrance to kind of blend in with the building, and I do agree if it's going to be a separate tenant, that's a separate look. So I would be in support of amending the recommendation to just remove the one from the north side of the building, I think, as technically as it's called, the one that faces, is that correct? Deb, you're, you're calling that the east side of the building?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
So should we, should we change that?
This one is on the east and north side over here. They will, they are going to remove.
The gridiron structure shall be removed from the east?
North.
Okay.
In our background, it's stated as the east side. So I'm referencing that. I'm assuming it because the way the building's situated, I do think it's on the north side of the building, but.
There, well, there are two, and they are already removing the one from the north side of the building. This one was shown as staying. So what staff was recommending is that both of them be removed.
Okay.
Instead of just one.
But the one that you're, got the pointer on now, that would be on the east side of the building?
Correct.
And, and that's the one I think we're discussing is leaving?
Yes.
And so removing the north, but keeping the east?
That's right.
As far as the parapet wall, I would be in support of, I agree with the chair. I kind of like the center parapet from a pyramid standpoint and the signage. The, our signage rules will, will come to play when the permit for the signage is pulled. I would not be in support of another parapet 100 feet away or 20 feet away that comes up completely separate for that signage. And that was kind of my, I may have misunderstood it in some of our conversations, but I believe this is an appropriate look in this instance, and I think we've done a great job of, of taking a building that's in very poor shape, that has a tremendous visibility as you're going down 35 in our community. So I'm excited to see this changed. So I would be in support of modifying the first condition that we spoke of and removing the second condition.
Okay.
Is there, did I, is there agreement there?
Yeah, I'm, I'm with you on that. That was my next point I was coming to.
Okay.
Yep, that's fine. All right, then, I think we can take a moment.
So we have now three conditions. Condition one was amended.
Yep. And condition two is removed?
Yep.
Okay.
So we only have three conditions now.
All right. I think we can hear a motion, then.
Mr. Chair, I beg to move that the planning commission recommend to the city council approval of the rezoning development stage BUD and preliminary plat of Caliber Edition subject to the following three conditions. Condition one, the former Best Buy blue gridiron structure shall be removed from the, we have east.
It's be the north.
From the north side, okay. And, and condition two is removed. Condition three, the, the trash enclosures that encroaches over the south line, south lot line of the subject site shall be removed and relocated on the lot that is south to meet required setbacks and remove the encroachment over the common lot line. And number three, separate sign permits shall be required before any exterior signage is installed, and said signage shall meet all requirements of the ordinance.
Thank you. Motion made by Commissioner Singh.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Bradrick. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? That passes 3-0, and we'll go to the council also on Tuesday, July 8th.
Good luck.
Good luck.
Thank you.
Thank you. The last item on the agenda is any updates? Commissioners, any updates?
Nope.
None from the chair.
I just, I see.
One, it's very nice to have both, Chris and Deb.
Yes.
I need to see that.
Have both planners here.
Yep.
I think just as a highlight, or make sure I'm correct, the next planning commission meeting is Monday, July 14th.
Correct.
Not Tuesday, or not, Monday, sorry, Monday, July 14th, so we're skipping a.
There's an extra week in there, so.
We'd love to see you, but we won't be here in between, so.
I, I would, I would not be wrong.
So, all right. Anything else?
That's it.
Okay.
Move to adjourn?
Moved by Commissioner Bradrick, second by Commissioner Singh. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned. Thank you very much.